Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Christine Miller. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapeta. Representing District Six, Chris Bowles. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostel. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, regular scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation. Give my chaplain, Commissioner Gwen Myers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh gracious having the Father, we thank you for another day. We thank you for all the services that you have allowed this county to provide from January up until today. And we're going to continue until December thirty first. I ask that you have a special blessing on this meeting. Bless our leadership and bless the constituents who come in for services on behalf of our county in your namesake. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. This is a rare occasion that we do not have any proclamations or commendations to give this morning. So Bonnie, you want to review the change of the agenda?
Yes, sorry. Commissioner Cohen is trying to log on. That's what I was trying to work on. We have one off the agenda item, which is item F seven by Commissioner Miller. This is direct staff to work with the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay to make contract modifications requested by the Crisis Center as detailed in the agenda item backup. We have one item that has been deferred. It's item A thirty-one. It's deferred to January fifteenth, which is to approve the Second Amendment and reinstated agreement between Hillsborough County and the Southwest Florida Water Management District to provide up to five hundred thousand dollars of cooperative funding. We have several items for time certain. The first one is item D one at ten o'clock. It's to conduct a public hearing on the program year twenty twenty-three Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, which is the CAPR, to close the public comment period and approve the submittal of the CAPR to HUD. Item D two at ten o'clock is to hold a public hearing to consider the transfer of certain property rights on the CB grows Booker Creek Buffer Preserve elapsed site to Tampa Electric Company to establish underground electrical service for the county's facilities. The project is part of Tico's Countywide Storm Protection Plan. Item D three at ten o'clock is to conduct a public hearing to consider enacting and amending of restated solid waste and resource recovery revenue bond ordinance to fund improvements at the Northwest Transfer Facility, the Resource Recovery Facility, and the Southeast County Landfall. This is related to item D five. Item D five is also at ten o'clock, which is related to item D three, which is to conduct a public hearing to comply with the federal tax law TEFFAR hearing in connection with the proposed issuance of the county's solid waste and resource recovery revenue bond, Series twenty twenty-five, and the principal amount of not to exceed forty-five million to finance improvements related to the various projects and to adopt a series resolution to provide for the issuance of Series twenty twenty-five A bonds and twenty twenty-five B bonds. Item G four at ten o'clock is to conduct a public hearing for street lighting districts for annexation and modifications of residential street lighting services for areas in Hillsborough County's Consolidated Street Lighting Special Purpose District for the twenty twenty-five tax year. Item F two at ten fifteen is by Commissioner Miller. This is to receive a special appearance by Senator Jay Collins and Representative Michael Owen. Item E one at ten thirty is to receive a special appearance by Chuck Carden, General Manager of Tampa Bay Water, to provide a brief overview of Tampa Bay Water and major initiatives in the works. Item E two at ten forty-five is a special appearance by Rob Higgins, Executive Director of the Tampa Bay Sports Commission, to present their final activity report for twenty twenty-four. Item G two, which is related to item G four, is at eleven o'clock. This is to receive a report regarding improving the development services permitting process. And item G four related to G two, also at eleven, is to receive a report regarding simplifying and streamlining the RFP and RFQ process. Eleven forty-five is recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Clear for motion, approve the changes.
Move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Myers. Do a second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Cameron Sapeta. Please accord your vote, change of the agenda.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
I also want to point out that Commissioner Cohen is participating virtually. We'll go into the public comment portion of the agenda. The board welcomes comments from board members or from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the board that comments are not directed personally at staff or the board, but rather the issues. We've set aside forty-five minutes for a public comment this morning. Chair, we're calling speakers by name in which you've signed up to speak. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Each person will be given three minutes. The first three speakers this morning are Pam Miniani, followed by Orin Milstein and in a looks like an Idit Lodringer. Ms. Miniani here. Please come forward. Good morning.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Good morning. My name is Pam Miniani, and I am the co-executive director of the Florida Israel Business Accelerator, known as FIBA. I'm here today to express our heartfelt gratitude for your ongoing and unwavering support of FIBA and, most importantly, for your support of Hillsborough County's growing role as a hub for innovation and economic development. As you know, FIBA has been dedicated to bringing Israeli innovation to Hillsborough County, and I'd like to share some specific highlights of our success here. Since two thousand and seventeen, eighteen Israeli companies have established a presence right here in Tampa Bay. These companies have collectively raised two hundred and fifty million dollars and created at least twenty-seven direct high-tech, high-wage jobs, along with many more indirect jobs in sectors such as manufacturing and distribution. This community has the perfect combination of support from both the business sector and local government to help companies thrive and contribute to the economic prosperity of the entire region. On behalf of everyone at FIBA, I'd like to thank you again for your support. We look forward to continuing to work together to strengthen our local economy and make Hillsborough County an even stronger center for global business. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miniani. Appreciate your comments. Got Orin Milstein's virtual. Is Orin on the line?
Hi, good morning. My name is Orin Milstein. And just to follow on what Pam just said, FIBA has been really great, not only for bringing the Israeli companies, but for the local economy. I am the CEO of one of the companies that they brought over, a company called StemRec. We've developed offices here in Tampa, downtown Tampa, and also manufacturing capabilities in St. Pete's. And this has been a very, very blessed combination of a business accelerator that's able to attract the best and brightest minds out of Israel and have them plant seeds here in Tampa Bay. We've had great success in hiring people and in growing with all of our customers here, be it SOCOM, be it NASA, be it Tampa General Hospital. We've been able to work with all of these in a very successful way. So I'd just like to say that what they're doing is really great. It's really great for the local economy, and I'm very appreciative of Hillsborough County continuing the support without which I wouldn't be here, me and many others. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have a last name Lodringer as virtual, and then followed by Joseph Probasko, Pamela Guerin, and Alfred Goldberg.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Idi Dodringer. I'm the Regional Director of the Israeli American Council, and I'm very happy and pleased to be here this morning. I'd like to start by expressing my gratitude to the Hillsborough County for supporting the FIBA. Your support has been instrumental to elevate programs that empower both teens and adults in our community. As the Regional Director of the Israeli American, I'm in charge of all central Florida and, of course, all the Tampa Bay area. And FIBA has provided us, the Israeli and the Jewish community, with incredible platform for growth, innovation, connection, all the resources and network that we're getting from them forces a unique base where the next generation can thrive and guided by spirit of entrepreneurship and innovation, of course. And also, we have a program for teens that's called Aitanim Innovation Program, and this program challenges students to think creatively and collaborate, preparing them to become the leaders and change the mark of tomorrow. We are getting from FIBA, all the judges, the mentors, the experts, their space, their support, a hundred percent support, whatever we need from them for our teens. I think the next generation is the most important generation now in those days, and again, we couldn't do it without them. We have also a leadership program that they're running in FIBA that empowering stronger community with the Israeli and Jewish community together. And we're creating opportunities that will leave a lasting impact on our community. So again, I would like to appreciate and to thank you, Hillsborough County, and we appreciate very much all the effort and support that we are getting on behalf of the Jewish and the Israeli community of central Florida, especially in Tampa Bay area. Thank you so much.
Joseph Probasko, followed by Pamela Guerin. It's Joseph here. Pamela Guerin, then Alfred Goldberg and Jack Ross. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Pamela Guerin, and I'm here representing the Tampa Jewish Community Centers and Federation. I want to say on behalf of the organization, thank you so much to the Board of County Commissioners for your unwavering support of Tampa's, the county's Jewish community and that of Israel. Your commitment strengthens our shared values and enhances the cultural richness of our county. And by fostering these important ties, you contribute not only to the well-being of our residents, but the continued growth and prosperity of our local economy, and your dedication is truly appreciated and makes a lasting and positive impact on our community. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you, ma'am. Alfred Goldberg, followed by Jack Ross.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm here to speak on behalf of FIBA. I have been a longtime advocate of entrepreneurship in the Tampa Bay area, specifically Hillsborough County, from the days of Commissioner Mark Sharp and his initiatives. Supporting FIBA helps make Tampa and Hillsborough County competitive at the global level. Israeli tech companies always look abroad to establish presence, and the question is not, when will they come to the United States, or if they'll come to the United States, but where? And your support helps ensure where is Hillsborough County. So thank you again for your support.
Thank you, sir. Jack Ross, followed by Jesse Davidson, then Melissa Nordbeck. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. Firstly, my name is Jack Ross. I'm a resident of Hillsborough County. Like to begin with a couple of thank yous. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today in support of FIBA, the Florida Israel Business Accelerator. Thank you for your ongoing support of FIBA. And thank you for your continued leadership and vision that has made Hillsborough County both economically and culturally diverse and one of the most sought-after counties in the state of Florida for people to live. And I believe that FIBA, as an organization, has been an important component of that growth, both culturally and economically. FIBA brings numerous companies, you heard from one of the founders this morning, from Israel to Tampa, with significant local impact. The founders and their families, they buy homes and they buy cars. They send their children to school. They pay taxes. And again, as you heard, they create jobs. FIBA companies have contributed an incredible amount to our day-to-day lives, both here in Hillsborough County and in the country generally. They've co-developed with TGH a new exoskeleton to provide increased radiation protection to doctors in a cath lab and for their teams. They've created new imaging to detect prostates in three dimensions and then new and innovative ways to biopsy the soft tissue for more accurate results, which leads to better treatment, which leads to longer life expectancy. And they've developed technologies that now enable human beings to travel into deep space safely for the first time since the early seventies with NASA, together in partnership with Lockheed Martin. These are just a few of the ROI's that come out of FIBA and the community and come with your generous support, ongoing support for FIBA, and I thank you. And I wish all of you here and in the audience a happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Jesse Davidson, Jesse here. Melissa Nordbeck. Then followed by Matthew Taylor, and then George Neiman. Good morning.
Good morning, Melissa Nordbeck. Item G two is the best Christmas gift a developer could ask for. It allows every developer to go straight to construction. No pre-submittal conference, no preliminary plat, no rezoning sufficiency meetings, and would allow design exceptions and variances after they get their rezoning approved, instead of asking for those exceptions before. The preliminary plat is the first public rendering that residents can see that shows what a subdivision will look like. Setbacks, number of units, lot size, building height. It shows access points, retention ponds, storm drainage, and open spaces, all very important to surrounding residents that will be directly affected by the new development. The preliminary plat is also when zoning requirements are reviewed. Natural resources is examining wetlands, trees, wildlife habitat. Utilities are being assessed to see if there's capacity, and school concurrency is being addressed to make sure there's room for new students. Traffic analysis is also required during this phase of planning. Currently, developers only receive building permits for ten percent of the lots during this review period. This encourages them to prioritize infrastructure like stormwater, drainage, retention ponds, and road improvements before building out the entire subdivision. This proposal would allow the developer to receive one hundred percent of the building permits, removing any incentive other than building homes as fast as they can. State law requires rezonings to follow several steps. Public notice, public hearings that require findings of consistency from Development Services and the Planning Commission, and a public vote by the board. This proposal would allow developers to ask for design exceptions and variances after they get their rezoning approved, not before, as required under the current policy. This is a violation of citizens' due process. For the board to vote on a rezoning, put forth a resolution, and then have the conditions of approval changed without any additional public notice should kill this proposal on that basic principle alone. And speaking of due process, the preliminary plat is the first-line development order that can be legally challenged for consistency with the comprehensive plan. A citizen only has thirty days to file an administrative appeal with the county or file a legal action. The preliminary plat is not publicly noticed, and it's up to citizens to check daily if one has been filed. A citizen can now only hope to find the construction approval, another triggering event, and point of entry that is not publicly noticed, if they want to legally challenge the development. Eliminating the requirement for a preliminary plat only allows citizens one shot at a legal challenge, and they will lose outright within thirty days. The developments coming up for approval are massive in size and scale. With this proposal, there is no different review criteria for a project with homes, twenty homes, or a project consisting of sixty-five hundred homes. It's straight to construction for everyone. This is not planning. This is not representing your constituents.
All right, thank you. Next three speakers, Matthew Taylor, followed by George Neiman, and then Yvette Neiman. Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is George Neiman. I live in East Hillsborough in Dover, and I wanted to share information with you and educate the public. We have a coalition of community leaders and citizens that live around in the vicinity and near the former Sydney Phosphate Mine. And the speculative landowners that now own it are wanting to develop it, including putting large-scale residential on it. And I wanted to show you on the overhead this map of the property. And the property is bordered by Dover Road, Turkey Creek, State Road sixty, as well as Durant Road. And if you will notice in the overhead, there are tailing ponds, or what they call settling ponds, where after the phosphate was scrubbed from the rock, and they used a lot of toxic chemicals, diesel and kerosene and dioxane in this scrubbing process. So they have wastewater. In the fifties, when this mine was in operation, they didn't use lining, which today, more modern phosphate mining, they line these ponds. These one, two, three, four happen to be exactly where these owners are proposing to put twelve hundred homes. And we think that the public isn't fully aware of it, and we're hoping the commissioners become aware of it and look at it with some scrutiny, because I think it's insanity to approve a development and then try and ascertain whether it's safe to do that. This would be a ticking time bomb to put all those homes on land that has all of these chemicals that have been absorbed into the soil. And there's radioactive problems as well. So I beg the commission to look at this with scrutiny and use prudence when you review these cases. That's Comprehensive Plan Amendment twenty-three fifteen and twenty-four oh six, which will be with the Planning Commission. They're going to have a hearing in January, and then it comes to this board for final approval in February. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yvette Neiman, we had Matthew Taylor, don't know if he's here, and then Ellsworth Williams. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yvette Neiman, East Hillsborough County. I'd like to speak this morning to update you and educate you about a problem we have in East Hillsborough. We have two private landowners that want to turn a three-thousand-acre former phosphate mine into retail shopping centers, medical offices, daycare centers, and a huge subdivision of twelve hundred dwellings. They call it the Energy Industrial Park, even though it seems destined to never produce any energy. The problem is that the history of this property involves a toxic dumping ground filled with forever contaminants, along with the radioactive remnants of phosphate mining. What's truly amazing is that only about ten percent of the three thousand acres have ever been tested for contaminants, and yet they want to develop all of these things on an untested ninety percent of the property. For many decades, our county commissioners thought it would be prudent to avoid letting any residential ever being built. However, now it seems like this commission has a new mindset that it is fine to allow homes on a former phosphate mine. But here's the big question. Those toxic chemicals in the soil have not changed and won't change in our lifetime. Why were all the previous commissions concerned since the nineteen sixties, and all of a sudden there's no worries? How come all of a sudden it sounds like a great idea? Our whole community is puzzled by this. There's no new data that shows it is safe to smoke cigarettes or to live and work on a phosphate mine. Community is truly worried about what's going on. Thank you for your time and happy holidays.
Thank you. Matthew Taylor, followed by Ellsworth Williams, and then Denise Herndon. Good morning.
September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, Commissioner Wustel sent a letter to the governor's office to report credible complaint of potential fraud and request an investigation in Von Ayers' trip to the Masters Golf Tournament. Then in November, Mr. Wustel once again cries fraud and unethical behavior, and this time points a finger to Mr. Hagan for joining and on the golf trip hosted by Horrors Construction. Mr. Wustel, you told the local paper that what Mr. Hagan did wasn't technically legal, was technically legal, but it's just ethically bankrupt. Now, I'm not here to defend Mr. Hagan at all. I'm here to encourage Mr. Wustel to point out all the unethical behavior on this board. See, Mr. Wustel, what you did back in September and November is nothing more than bureaucratic theater. See, Mr. Wustel, both you and Mr. Hagan have ties to the same political consultants located on fifteen oh nine, East Ninth Avenue in Ebo City. So if Hagan is unethical, then so are you. I've been informed that you, along with other bureaucrats on this board, have intended private gallias hosted by one of the Energy Industrial Park owners. Mr. Wustel, had you really wanted to snuff out unethical behavior from this board, you would have wrote a letter to the governor's office about the twenty thousand dollars in campaign contributions from Eisenhower Property Group to two commissioners on this board. Mr. Bowles and Mrs. Miller, both have matching campaign contribution made by multiple cell corporations owned by Jeffrey Hills of Eisenhower Property Group. If you were truly against unethical behavior, you would write to the governor about the preferential treatment Eisenhower Property Group receives. Take Two Rivers Community, for example. This board allowed Eisenhower Property Group to run utilities into the rural area. The Comp Plan Amendment isn't finalized yet, so the board wasn't legally able to grant utilities into the rural areas. What the Wustel? Illegal utilities in the rural area only available to the highest donor. I'm Matt the Welder. God bless America, and I really wish you bureaucrats would start working for the common man.
Thank you, sir. Ellsworth Williams, followed by Denise Herndon, and then it looked like Rick Morales. Good morning.
Good morning, County Commissioners, Chair, and my fellow veterans, Commissioner Sapeta and Josh Washel. I'm Ellsworth Williams, CEO and President for Veterans Council and Veterans on thirty-eight ten West Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa. Twenty twenty-four has been a great year for Veterans Council and Veterans, thanks to the Hillsborough County Commissioners for giving us the funds, giving us the funds that resulted in us creating two programs that we think are much needed. One is for the families of veterans, and second is to elderly veterans. We held our first Serving Elder Veterans Conference on August twenty-four. The purpose was to increase awareness and to bring together the resources for the veterans and who are serving veterans and caregivers. It was a great success. Why am I doing, why we do this, why we have this as a second program? Well, the largest demographics that die by suicide in Florida is sixty-five and older. That's something people don't realize, but sixty-five and older, you can especially think about that during the holidays. There are over seven hundred and nineteen thousand, over eighty, over sixty-five elderly veterans living in Florida. The conference, the conference we had was primarily consisted of Hillsborough residents. The resources included, and the panels included, the James Hurley VA, Florida Department of Veteran Affairs, Hillsborough County Veteran Services, Bayer Legal, the panel of the local community resources like AARP and the Alzheimer Association, and experts in mental health, and the residents of Hillsborough who had to care for elderly veterans. What was it that we learned? Well, first we learned is a lack of knowledge and awareness on available resources available to the elderly veteran in the community. Secondly, we also noticed a lack of communication and collaboration between the federal, state, county, and the public organizations. That needs to be improved. We want to have a more effective, effective results. More importantly, a definite need expressed by attendees there that this is something that they needed, that they looked for. One thing we learned in military, if I identify a problem, then we got to be part of the solution. Well, for Veterans Council and Veterans, we're already starting advocacy. I've already, I've already had, I've already met State Representative French Reddick School. I met the staff of Jay Collins just yesterday, and next year in twenty twenty-five will be more elected officials, including Commissioner Sapeta. This is something that takes an entire village, not just one person, to sit there and address this, this issue, and that's what we're pushing for. I want you to say the date. The next conference is going to be the fourteenth of June, twenty twenty-five. It'd be great to be there to get a chance to talk to your constituents on their problems they have with elderly veterans. Finally, I want to encourage everyone to take the time to spend, spend or visit an elderly veteran during the holidays. It'd be greatly appreciated. In fact, Veterans Council and Veterans, one thing we're going to do, we're going to adopt the Balderra Lopez Notching Home, and we're going to visit it today. And more importantly, tonight, I'm going to go fly and see my dad. He's at the CLC and the VA. Let them know I still care about him, even though the holidays are here. Please be careful about the holidays. Thank you, thank you so much, and have a great holiday. Ho, ho, ho.
Ho, 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 Mr. Williams. Thank you for your comments. Denise Herndon, followed by Rick Morales, and then Brady Harris, which is virtual. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Denise Herndon. I've come in front of this board several times concerning hacked sheriff's reports, falsified sheriff's reports. In the beginning of all regular BOCC meetings, we say the pledge, the last five words, liberty and justice for all. I'm not, my liberty was taken away from me when I'm not, my liberty was taken away from me when a deputy, a sheriff deputy falsified a report. And I'm not getting justice. I have given every board member here case numbers of police reports dating back, starting at January 15, 21, when I was hit by a car. And I later found out that it was Shirlene Hammond who hit me and took off. On February 13, 21, I was a witness of a shooting, and the body cam has been altered. Even these minutes, of these three minutes that I get of freedom of speech have been edited. The latest was last month, on November 13. The mic went low, and when I listened to it at the library, because that's the only computer access I had, it was, there were few things that were changed. On June 24, 24, I went to the FDLE because I first tried making an appointment with Cronister concerning these falsified sheriff's reports. He didn't respond, so I went to professional standards. What they did was send out Behavior Health, or Behavior Resource Unit to my home, and they've been out several times, and I've sat in a meeting and said, do not send any Behavior Health units out at my home anymore, because you're setting me up for a Behavior Health issue, which isn't the case when a deputy falsifies reports. The last time that I called was on June 17, 24, to complain about things being taken from my home. I was given a wrong report number, because when I went the next day, I'm sorry, it was July 11, when I went July 12 to get that report, the report number that they gave me isn't concerning me. I had that conversation recorded, so I did not mess up the case number. On July 17, I tried making an appointment with Hagan, and I was told that I needed to give the paperwork first. Well, I've given paperwork, and things get changed. I gave Wustel's office.
Thank you, Ms. Herndon. Appreciate your comments. Got Rick Morales, followed by Brady Harris, and then Bruce Ponte. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I'm Rick Morales, for the record, with the FEDA, ANC, SBA, the Office of Disaster Assistance. Thank you so much for the time and opportunity. First of all, I want to give a shout out to Digna. She has been our main point of contact for the county. She has been sharing our information. Thank you so much also to Christine Miller, to give me, forgive me, the opportunity to participate at the Chamber of Commerce activity in Plant City. We have had a great outreach in this county. We have been working with FEMA, doing the town halls, speaker bureaus, city council on meetings, and a lot of activities with the Chamber of Commerce. So I'm here today to provide some updates and to do some clarifications. The deadlines are for January 7, but with the SBA, that's for physical damages. That means for infrastructure, real estate, inventory, equipment, for homeowners, renters, nonprofits, and businesses. But that's Helene and Milton. Debbie already expired, but we have deadlines for economic damages, that we always give more time for that, for Debbie. That's for our homeowners, businesses, and nonprofits. Debbie, May 12, 2025. Helene, June 30, 2025. Milton, July 30, 2025. That's for losses on profits. Once again, only for businesses and nonprofits. They can use that for payroll, ordinary expenses, for rent, for taxes. So that's very valuable information. The centers, we always provide the information about the centers. We encourage the people to keep applying, to reconsider, to appeal, to complete the procedures. You don't want to be at the end of the line with all those applications. We have received like 50,000 with Milton, and like 25,000 with Helene. With the 800 number, 659-2955, 800-659-2955. If you call that number, that's the customer service center number, they can answer you any questions, they can, they can give you the status of the applications, they can tell you the closest centers that you can apply with the SBA. We have one here, like eight or 10 minutes from here, like the center is on 201 of Palm Avenue. So we are there so that people can go there face to face. Always is better to visit the centers instead of doing everything online. It's not that easy when we leave. If we leave on January 7, we don't know if the state is going to request it, and FEMA is going to approve it. But if we leave, then you have to do everything online, so that's very important to know, too. So thank you so much for the time and opportunity, and we aren't going to be here until the end. We have been here since Debbie, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Appreciate your comments. I got Brady Harris, followed by Bruce Ponte, both virtual, and the last speaker this morning will be Saul Fleishman. Mr. Harris on the line.
Yes, I am. I'd like to speak on, first of all, CPA 24-33, also known as the John Barry Property, J O N Barry Property. As far as I know, y'all have already passed that. It's a 20-acre landlocked property, and he's wanted to put 19 homes on it. My understanding is it's low-lying and landlocked, and has to use a subdivision off of Arch McDonald to get in and out. So my question is, is there's no infrastructure for the 19 homes? He's going to have to elevate it evidently, and that's going to flood people out, and that's a concern. He's also went back and asked for 31.8 acres under RV-PD 24-1263. Yeah, he's wanted to put 120-something houses on 31.8 acres, I believe. That's even going to cause more flooding without lack of infrastructure. The next thing I'd like to speak with on is the EIP, CPA 23-15 and 24-06. They're wanting to put, wear out industrial and 1,200-plus houses, and without any infrastructure, and for, and there's known forever chemicals on the property, which has bled onto my property. I have high radiation levels that's coming directly from that property through one of my ditches and leads into Turkey Creek, which leads into the Alphata River. And there's studies, I guess, being done to find out how forever chemicals are getting into our bayous and waters. That's one source, I believe. I lived there my whole entire life. My family's on this property since 67. We've never been flooded out until this year. We had 10 to 12 inches of water in my late mother's house, so it's completely, completely destroyed. We've lost farm animals mysteriously, and I believe it's due to the chemicals, forever chemicals and radiation.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Bruce Ponte, is virtual. Mr. Ponte on the line.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Bruce Ponte, Dover, Florida. I'm a 24-and-a-half-year combat veteran, and my wife is a nurse. We have intimate experience with being public service. You all have a very tough job. For that being said, I think you all pan and should do better for the residents of this county, especially concerning land use and infrastructure. The rate at which mass expansion is approved is staggering and often done with reckless abandon, even when the Planning Commission recommends against an item and often passes this board. Your public voting records are quite clear on this. I live in a small subdivision off South Dover Road, which has become the center of controversy for several plan developments. The Energy Industrial Park, Dover Farms, and one other private developer are planning large-scale development on what is mostly a rural study. Massive commercial usage, along with what could amount to between 1,200 and 1,500 new homes, with access to a two-lane rural road that is less than two miles long and already congested. This is on the eastern side of the road only, as the rest of the land has developed. Additionally, much of that development would be on an old polluted phosphate mine that has an EPA Superfund site on the property. No alternative energy first is what previous commissioners approved. Needless to say, we are strongly opposed to these developments, along with any expansion of the urban service area, which is rapidly destroying the rural lifestyle that so many in this area have become accustomed to. I moved from South County a little over a year and a half ago because of the mess that has occurred there. I have watched Riverview, Wyomama, and Baum go through the same issues because this board has allowed it. Allowing these developers to destroy eastern Hillsborough County would be a tragedy. Meeting after meeting, citizens crying out, yet large-scale development is continually passed, taking little into consideration of those who oppose these projects. Many of you have said our voices matter, but again, your voting records say otherwise. It is not the responsibility of this commission to solve Florida's housing crisis. Quite the opposite, your job should be managing the growth of this county in a responsible manner that takes everyone's needs into consideration, not just the wealthy. Additionally, it's my own opinion, the citizens of this county do not need a history lesson from this board of what Florida looked like during the Cretaceous period 150 million years ago. Why? Well, simply because the landscape has changed. There are no shopping centers, warehouses, massive housing complexes, and there sure as heck were no polluted lands to build on. Finally, I'll leave you with this question. Who polices you, the politicians? Because it's obvious to many of us, some, if not all of you, look down on the constituents that put you in that chamber. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Last speaker this morning, Saul Fleishman. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Saul Fleishman. I'm the founder and senior partner of Fleishman-Garcia Masowski Architecture, and we've been practicing architecture here in Hillsborough County for almost 53 years. And for 40 of those years, we've been doing your Hillsborough County buildings, and I thank you for the opportunity. A few months ago, I attended a focus group hosted by your Hillsborough County Procurement, and I'm pleased to report that Procurement listened to the attendees and myself, and that they are really trying to improve the procurement process, to streamline it and to make it fairer for everyone. Among the changes being considered are ensuring that construction budgets are in line with project scopes, and moving from hard-bidding projects to construction management at risk. We are grateful that you are considering these important changes and of the procurement process. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Fleishman, for your comments and for participating in the, in the work groups. All right, that closes the public comment. Can we motion approve the consent?
Move for approval.
Motion Commissioner Myers.
Second.
Second Commissioner Cameron Cepeda, please record your vote on the consent agenda.
Aye.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay. Fine, looks like we got a few, a few minutes before our first time certain.
Yes, sir. So we will go to the regular agenda to Item B1, and this is to approve a term sheet for exchange of properties relating to the sheriff's office. And while the staff is coming to the podium, I really want to thank Greg Horwiddell, John Mueller, Sheriff Cronister, and Chief St. John, and their teams, who have worked so diligently on this project, and this is really a transformational project for our county going decades into the future. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Horwiddell.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Greg Horwiddell, Deputy County Administrator for Hillsborough County. Before I turn it over to Director of Facilities in Real Estate, John Mueller, to go over the details of this proposal, I will echo what the county administrator said. This is a transformational project for Hillsborough County. Not only does it save us significant dollars over having to build a new facility to house the sheriff's headquarters, it also provides us the opportunity to do that construction that is necessary on the site that we're proposing within a three-year time span, so that we can make sure it's a seamless transition for all of the necessary 911 and data networks that are required. I will point out, back in 2005, there was an analysis, a study done, that indicated that the sheriff's office for continued growth needed to have a larger campus and needed to have something that was in close proximity to major highways and their complex on Falkenburg Road. I'm happy to say that we did find the unicorn in this county. There is the site that John will talk about. We call it the Delaney Property. We did receive an unsolicited proposal from Ebor City Holdings that was prompted early on in the year by a conversation that I had with Principal for Ebor City Holdings, and indicated to him that if they wished to submit something to the county on an unsolicited basis, they needed to provide for the space for the sheriff. They worked their end of the proposal, brought it to the county administrator, she authorized us, its staff, to dig into it, and we spent quite a bit of time at the staff level negotiating the terms that you'll hear today. We will be coming back to you if you approve this item and bring a formal contract so that we can move forward on this generational transformation. With that, I'll turn it over to John Mueller, and I would like to also note, John and his team really did outstanding work. Jared Delfino from his shop, Anne-Marie Lenton. The county attorney's office was extremely helpful, Cameron Clark in particular, Todd Sobel. And I would also note that we have representatives from the sheriff's office here as well, Chief Deputy St. John. So with that, John.
Thank you, Greg. Can you put up the cover slide for me, please? John Mueller, Director of Facilities Management and Real Estate Services. You've heard the presentation before on the proposed exchanges on June 20 of 2024. At that meeting, we asked for your permission to advertise 30 days for other proposals. This was done. Ebor City Holdings, or YCH, as you may hear, was the sole responder. What I am presenting today for your consideration is the term sheet upon which final contract will be based. We are required by both the Florida statutes regarding the Exchange of Property, FS 12537, and the Community Redevelopment Area Property Disposal, Florida Statute 163380, since our current HSO operations center is in Ebor, which is a CRA. But we are required to accept and publish these terms prior to presenting the final exchange contract to the B OCC for consideration. Slide number two, please. Here are the subject properties to be exchanged. The Delaney Property on the right and the five HCSO Ebor properties on the left, the average appraised values are shown. While the Ebor properties have a $5,445,000 higher value, please note that the appraisals included hypothetical conditions and extraordinary assumptions regarding the encumbrances, the historic casitas on site, the two existing fuel spills, and stating the obvious that this site will be demolished and require rezoning by any owner, future owner, excuse me. Please note, on the Delaney side, the favorable market conditions and the value you can find in today's market for commercial office space, the entitlements, the parking structure, the 140,000 square feet, which quite frankly, given the market conditions, is why this exchange is of interest to the county at this moment. Slide number three, please. HCSO needs a three-year move period. Given the critical operations, this is a lights-on, lights-off move for certain critical infrastructure and security-related items. For this reason, we have a term sheet that proposes a two-phase exchange. In June of '25, the county would receive the Delaney property free and clear. We can then invest the relocation monies into the property to start the process. YCH would receive two of the five Ebor properties, the smaller ones. The parking lot will exchange free and clear. However, the small operations building fuel site facility will exchange with a three-year leaseback and a reverter clause. The reverter clause, this is our $3.5 million guarantee should YCH not complete Phase Two. The county will pay The county will pay YCH $24.1 million at Phase One, mainly because we have not yet exchanged the other three parcels. You can see that three years later, or sooner, if we're ready, we can then put the properties to YCH and complete the exchange. YCH will then pay the county $25.6 million. Again, I will emphasize, we have put into a place a reverter worth $3.5 million. If Phase Two didn't occur, we of course wanted to. We would still own four of the five parcels and could sell them at the end of the relocation. We essentially get Parcel Two back despite having sold or exchanged it previously. Slide number four, last slide, Commissioner Hagan. So, this slide, I'm trying to be brief. This slide shows our negotiated valuation. Please note, I mentioned that the county receives $1.5 million positive when the exchanges are done. Now, how did we get there, given a $5.4 million difference in appraised value? The negotiated adjustments are shown. The Delaney property and the furnishings are really in excellent condition, and many of you have toured that and saw that. We have credited them 30% to 35% of the value because we want to keep those furnishings and fixtures in place. It's one less major task we need to do or spend on the relocation. I also mentioned the leaseback on Parcel Two. The 224K is based upon market appraised value. And then, that larger adjustment really goes back to reflecting the conditions and assumptions regarding the historic casitas and fuel spills on our properties. We credited 500K for assuming the risk of two fuel spill cleanups. The remainder reflects the appraised land value, the average appraised land value, of the .41 acres the casitas sit upon. Lastly, since we are requiring a property to close and then defer and have YCH wait three years for their main parcel, we agreed to closing cost adjustments. So what other value have we received beyond these negotiated values? I've mentioned a few. The reverter for risk protection, the entitlements of $260,000 on Delaney, which will secure our HCO operations for decades. There are others. We're including a very important easement on the Ybor properties that we need. We have built into our Phase Two exchange up to two years of contingency time with no penalty should the unexpected occur. And lastly, the redevelopment of Ybor. We have intentionally negotiated this as a real estate deal. However, it is worth mentioning that YCH does have a proven track record of redevelopment in Ybor that generates economic activity. I have also noted that our county finance has identified the possibility of short-term notes or commercial paper to fund our Phase One cash requirement of $24.1 million. If we do in fact issue these notes, these financing costs would reduce our $1.5 million upside. Regarding the $38.9 million already budgeted for our relocation costs, half of that is for facility-related items, including a new bunker for our communication center. The other half will be for technology and data. So to summarize, we believe the phased option provides value and minimizes risk for what we estimate is a three-year critical operations and infrastructure move. The site we are moving to, again, I'll note, will be suitable for decades, so we don't have to do this painful move for quite some time. We did consider other options of exchange. An upfront immediate exchange of property would have yielded about 3/4 a million more in value, but it would also have required us to leaseback all the properties for three years at a cost of several millions. Searching for other properties would be in the $35 to $40 million range, and those properties may not have the ideal characteristics that the Delaney property has for Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office operations. And lastly, mentioned previously back in June, new construction would be estimated at today's cost at around $80 million to build something similar. We're available for any questions.
Thank you, John. Appreciate the presentation. According to board comments, Commissioner Wostol.
Thank you, Mr. Muller. You said that there was an appraisal. Was this an independent appraiser that was hired?
Correct.
Completely objective?
Completely objective, two, average of two. For two for both property, both Ybor, Delaney, two independent appraisers, the values you see are average. And I want an affirmative?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
And you said that this analysis for the move was done in 2005, of which the county's population has grown by about 400,000 since then. So I will, as the population grows, you know, even during COVID, the people that said defund the police found out quick what that's like when the police don't show up because you don't have the proper ratio. So I will motion to direct the county administrator to proceed with creating the contract for the phased land exchange option presented today. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, Commissioner Wostol, second Commissioner Cameron Sepeta. Commissioner Myers?
Yes, I do agree with the comments by Bonnie and Greg H. This is a transformation and a win-win for our county and the sheriff's office, but most importantly, for District Three. You know, this is another crown jewel in District Three. As a District Three commissioner, I always look to see how my district can be enhanced and the information that staff have presented in this information, I'm all in support and can't wait for the three-year phase in to happen. Thank you so much.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. I don't see anyone else in the queue. Please record your vote on B1.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you, and we'll be back next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, Bonnie, next item.
It looks like we can go to F1, which is going to be your appointment to the Hart Board. Glenda will take us through that.
Good morning, good morning, commissioners. Today we have the Hart, and we have two nominees. You may choose one. Commissioner Hagan?
Thank you. Before I do that, I just, one comment I want to make, and I'm going to defer to the Hart Board members because I'm not on Hart, but historically, for high-profile boards like Hart, we have a number of nominees or options to choose from, and we have two here. And I'm just wondering if it would make sense, and I know one of the gentleman, I don't know the other one, if it would make sense for us to re-advertise, which we've done in the past, to get more options. I'm just putting that out there. I don't know if anyone has, concurs or not. Again, I'm not on the board, so I'm not trying to influence it, but I know historically we have a lot more folks to choose from, and I don't know why that is, but just thought I'd toss that out there if anyone. And if not, that's fine, too. So.
That's a Hart Board member, it's a good gesture. I can support that.
Anyone else want to comment or?
Could you just walk us through what is the normal timeframe? So in other words, is this different? I'm fairly new. I just know the first time we did this, we had lots of options for every one of the board appointments, and to see two only seems unusual to me as well.
Yes, so we had more applicants, but they did not qualify based on the residency. For this one, there is a specification that has to be unincorporated Hillsborough. So we had originally three eligible applicants, one of them pulled out, and then now we have two. Now, if we decide to re-advertise, the board will have to give me direction as to whether or not you will want this advertisement to go for two weeks, three weeks. It will be the board's decision, but usually, we advertise for three to four weeks.
Thank you for clarifying.
Commissioner Bowles?
What was the three to four-week period? What was the timeframe, the dates? Was it during the storms?
Well, from the day that we advertised, I count two to three weeks.
What was the actual date?
Oh, the actual date?
Yes, ma'am.
That we started this advertisement, it was back in September, when the board approved this, because it was an additional vacancy for Hart, and it was needed to have an additional member. So the board approved the advertisement. And then we didn't recruit, and we advertised, we got our applicants, but we needed to wait until after the election to actually make appointments to the board.
So the dates more or less correlate or coincided with the couple storms we had coming through?
It was before. The deadline was before. I don't have the deadline here. I don't recall. I have to go and look at my records, but it was right before that.
Commissioner Miller, does this handicap the board by holding another open period? I'm sorry, Commissioner Myers.
Given what has been stated by Glenda, is it Glenda? Glenda, I think we can go ahead and approve with the one, everyone had the opportunity to apply, because all this happened before the storm, and folks have been contacting us that want to serve, so we can go either way.
Commissioner Wostol?
Thank you. The reason for the delay is because the previous board had an issue where the one prior to us pre-stacked a lot of these appointments. So myself and Commissioner Owen changed our policies to make it to where with, when we're in a certain timeframe, it must wait until after the election to prevent that from happening. That was the reason for the delay.
Thank you for the clarification.
I'll go, if we don't want to re-advertise, I'll go with number two.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
Two.
Commissioner Myers?
One.
Commissioner Cohen? Commissioner Cameron Sepeta?
Two.
Commissioner Bowles?
Two.
Commissioner Wostol?
Two.
Adam Nerdbridge, it's the new board member.
Do we have a motion to confirm?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Wostol. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Okay. Bonnie, at 10:00 AM?
Yes. The first 10 o'clock is a public hearing, item D1. This is to conduct a public hearing regarding comments to the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, known as the CAPER. Brenda Brackens will present this item, and this is a public hearing. No one has signed up to speak.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Brenda Brackens, Affordable Housing Director. We're here to present item D1, which is to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the program year 2023 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, known as the CAPER, and to close the public comment period that began on November 13, and to approve the middle of the CAPER to the U.S. Department of HUD, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is HUD. And this is a requirement of HUD that we send this CAPER, and it's basically a report card of what was done in program year 23, which is our fiscal year 2024.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to the item? Not, can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Wostol. Please record your vote on D1.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is item D2. This is also a public hearing regarding the transfer of certain property rights, and Forrest Turberville will take us to this, through this public hearing. Nobody has signed up. I'm sorry, there is one person who has signed up to speak on this one.
Good morning, Forrest.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, commissioners, Forrest Turberville, Conservation Environmental Lands Management. The item for you today is comprised of three requested board actions. The first action is to hold a public hearing to consider the transfer of certain property rights on the county's Booker Creek Buffer ELAP Preserve to the Tampa Electric Company through an easement agreement that establishes underground electrical service for preserved facilities. This project is part of TICO's countywide storm protection plan to convert overhead electrical facilities to underground facilities and will help protect the preserved offices and storage buildings in the event of another major storm. The second action is to adopt a resolution designating a portion of the preserve for this project in accordance with the conditions stipulated in that resolution. And finally, the third action is to approve an agreement that provides TICO with the necessary real estate rights to install, operate, and maintain the project, which covers approximately 1/10 of an acre and meets all necessary criteria under ELAP ordinance 0-16, allowing for the transfer of these real estate rights. The cost associated with this item is limited to recording fees of less than $100, which can be adequately accommodated within the department's FY '25 operating budget. A reminder that this is a public hearing, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item?
Good morning, Melissa Nordbeck. I'm not surprised I'm the only person to speak to this item, because no one had any idea this was happening until the agenda came out on Friday. I have no idea if the Keystone community would be in support or opposition to this transfer of property rights from a conservation parcel to TICO, because no one knew it was happening. The state of Florida public notice requirements may have changed, but this board can decide to assist residents in participating in decisions that affect their community by advertising public hearings where affected residents might actually see the notice. Prior to the change in the statute, public hearings were required to be advertised in the paper with the largest circulation. This hearing was advertised in La Gazeta, a newspaper in Ybor City. The property in question is located in Keystone Odessa, the furthest northwest part of the county. This type of underhanded subterfuge is why citizens would be automatically defensive and suspicious about this project when there might have been no opposition at all. Your actions set up an antagonistic approach from the outset. Facilities management and real estate services and conservative Conservation Environmental Lands Management staff have determined that granting the TICO easement will not adversely affect the preservation and environmental quality of the CB Grove site. Notice, none of these reports are included in the backup in this agenda item. Where can a resident find these reports? Why weren't they included for the public to review prior to adopting a resolution? You are here to represent your constituents. You should be going above and beyond to do that, not hiding behind the bare minimum requirements you must meet to push through resolutions that receive little to no public input. I request that you postpone and reschedule this hearing until a new ad can be run in the Tampa Times. This will give Keystone residents a chance to review this document and the environmental reports and to have a better understanding of what this project's impacts might be.
Thank you for the comments. Anyone else want to speak to the item? Okay, can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion approved. Commissioner Myers, have a second? Have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bowles? All right, please record your vote on D2.
Motion carried, six to zero.
D3.
Thank you. The next item is item D3. This is also a public hearing to consider enacting and amending the restated solid waste resource recovery revenue bond ordinance. This is related to item D5, and Hank Ennis from the county attorney's office is here to present this item, and Dwayne Draper from our bond counsel is here as well.
Hank Ennis, County Attorney's Office. This is a public hearing to consider enacting an amended and restated solid waste bond ordinance in anticipation of issuing bonds to fund improvements at the county's Northwest Transfer Facility, the Resource Recovery Facility, and the Southeast County Landfill. The last time the solid waste bond ordinance was updated was in 2016. Changes to the ordinance today include updating various terms and covenants and basically modernizing the ordinance to appropriately finance the improvements to the solid waste facilities. The public hearing was properly advertised, and as Bonnie said, bond counsel is here today to answer any questions. This is a public hearing.
All right, thanks, Hank. Now, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to the item? Can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers. Have a second? Second, Commissioner Bowles. Please record your vote on D3.
Motion carried, six to zero.
D5.
Thank you. The related item, D5. This is also to conduct a public hearing to be in compliance with federal tax law relating to the issuance of bonds, and Kevin Bricki will speak to this item.
Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning, commissioners. Kevin Bricki, Management and Budget. This is item D5. This is an item to firstly, conduct a public hearing as advertised to comply with federal TFR tax law and receive public comment in connection with proposed county issuance and receive public comment in connection with proposed county issuance of the solid waste and resource recovery revenue bond, Series 2025A. Secondly, to adopt a series resolution to provide for the issuance of those Series 2025A bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $45 million, and the issuance of the solid waste and resource recovery refunding revenue bond, Series 2025B, in the principal amount not to exceed $70 million. This item will also authorize and provide for various forms, delegations, and statements required in relation to these proposed issuances. The 2025A series bonds will fund all or a portion of the cost of improvements to the Northwest Transfer Facility and the Southeast County Landfill, not being financed, refinanced in the 2025B bonds, and improvements to the Resource Recovery Facility. The 2025B bonds will fund all or a portion of the cost of the improvements at the Northwest Transfer Facility and the Southeast County Landfill Leachate Storage System, and refund the Series 2022 note that funded some interim costs for the transfer station and landfill. We have representatives from the Solid Waste Department, the County Attorney's Office, bond counsel, our financial advisors, and others if needed. This is a public hearing.
Thanks Kevin. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to the item? Can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion Commissioner Myers. Do you have a second? Second Commissioner Miller, please accord your vote on D5.
Cohen? Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you. Final public hearing?
The final public hearing is item D4. This is a public hearing relating to the street lighting districts. Josh Bellotti will take us through this public hearing.
Morning Josh.
Hello. Good morning Commissioners. Josh Bellotti, Engineering and Operations Department. This item is our annual public hearing to adopt the resolution for annexations and modifications to the residential street lighting districts as described in the agenda materials. This request is authorized by Ordinance 17-17, and these modifications have met all requirements of the Hillsborough County Consolidated Street Lighting Special Purpose District. This public hearing was duly advertised in the Tampa Bay Times in accordance with Florida statutes, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. This is a public hearing.
Right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to the item? Can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion Commissioner Myers. Second Commissioner Bowles, please accord your vote on D4.
Cohen? Motion carried, six to zero.
Thanks Josh. Bonnie?
Perhaps we could waive the rules and hear item F2, which is scheduled for 10:15.
Can I have a motion to waive the rules?
Move for approval.
Motion Commissioner Myers, and Commissioner Miller, please accord your vote to waive the rules.
Cohen? Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you. So item F2 is to receive a special appearance by Senator Jay Collins and Representative Michael Owen. This is Commissioner Miller's item.
Morning guys.
Hey Mr. Chair, how you doing?
Doing well.
Michael Owen, District 70, Apollo Beach, Florida. It does my heart good to be here today. It's kind of strange being on this side of the aisle. I do want to say y'all's seconds are a little slow today. So let's pick up the pace on some of these seconds.
Thank you for saying that.
But really, you know, we wanted to come here today, me and Senator Collins today. I'm newly elected to District 70, and we wanted to come here today just to have a little kumbaya moment with this board, to let you know that we are here to be your partner in Tallahassee. And, you know, I kind of left a little bit abruptly, as you all know. So Mr. Chair, if you'll just indulge me just to say goodbye to, it's not goodbye, but goodbye from this board. And each one of you, I've taken a piece with me, and even the new Commissioners on the board I have known for a long time. Commissioner Cepeda, I know that you'll continue to lead by faith. I know, Mr. Chair, you will continue to run these meetings efficiently, more efficiently than anywhere else in the state. Commissioner Bowles, your public safety knowledge, I think, is going to be such, so knowledgeable, especially for my district, which I'll talk about here in one second. Hostel Wustel, I know you will continue to keep the budget intact and do what you can to be a steward of the taxpayer dollars. Commissioner Cohen must have known I was coming in today. That's why he didn't show up. But I know he will continue to make a pragmatic approach to government that I value. And Commissioner Myers, I know that you will remind me, like you did at the parade last week, the reason why we do this, and it's for the people. And I represent the south part of Hillsborough County, and then also North Manatee County, which, as you all know, is probably the number one targeted development area in the state of Florida. So I know this board, I believe in this board, I know that you all will continue to focus on roads, infrastructure, public safety, density that makes a lot of sense. Commissioner Bowles, we need fire stations out there. You know that. And I know that this board will continue to do a great job in representing the people. I do have Senator Collins here with me today. He's someone that I extremely admire. He's somebody on the other, in the other chamber that I know is a real champion for Hillsborough County. And I forgot to address Commissioner Miller too, because I know that you will continue to continue the long line of great county Commissioners in District 4. It's never, the chain has never been broken. And to Bonnie Wise, she is a special person to me. This whole staff, Christine George, who's here today, Adam Gormley, all the folks that I've worked with, I just can't tell you much, how much I value your friendships. And again, I'm a phone call away for even staff here. I'm going to miss the staff more than the county Commissioners, for sure. One thing that I have here too, I have brought some documents for all of you all that have critical dates in the legislature, okay? Our delegation meeting, which is coming up soon, Hillsborough Day, which I really would like all the electeds to attend Hillsborough Day. If you haven't attended Hillsborough Day, it's a great thing, so please come out there, get your face in front of your representatives, okay? People like Senator Collins, who are going to be on transportation, heading transportation, this is a big deal for our county. So I highly, highly recommend if you give me a call, if you're having any trouble or any issues on getting out there, we will make accommodations for you. Danny Alvarez was going to come here today, but he got called up to Tallahassee. Plus the podium, we'd have to move it really low, low down in order to get him here. But again, I'm just here to let you all know that let us be your champions. We want to bridge gaps. We need local government, state government, federal government, all working together, right, Commissioner Myers, to do what's right for the people. So I hope Republicans and Democrats, you know that you can count on me to fight for the folks in your district. So Mr. Chairman, I'm going to hand these over here to the clerk, and if you'll indulge me, Senator Collins would like to speak.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Michael. Hard act to follow right there. It's wonderful to see each of you. We have a relationship with every single one of you. It's always good to have an opportunity to talk to the other elected leaders in our community. I want to echo what Michael said. This is about our people. This isn't politics. This is about people. It's about our people, our constituents, our home, and our community. Point blank, period. We've gone through a pretty incredible last few months. Multiple hurricanes, multiple flooding events, and what's incredible to see is how well our county came together, how well our city and county worked together along with our state assets, and look at what we've been able to do. It's absolutely amazing. If you would talk to people across the state and across our community, I think they would be shocked at how well this has gone, given the gravity of those storms. So I'm incredibly proud of your leadership on these subjects. So Mike hit on something there. I'm going to be the Chair of Transportation this year. This was my first choice. This is what I wanted to do, because if you look at what's going to impact the lives of our constituents over the next upcoming two-year cycle, transportation is at the core of every single thing we do. We know that 1,000 people per day are moving to the great state of Florida on average, and the vast majority of those are moving north of Sarasota and south of Pasco County, and then over towards Polk. What does that put us in? A really important spot in the state. We've got to get transportation right. I look forward to working with each of you to solve these critical problems. There are many things we're going to have to do, and we're going to have to roll up our sleeves and get to work to solve these problems. Lastly, I want to say, as we're coming into the holiday season, we have a lot to be thankful for. We truly do. When you look at our community, our governments working together, all the things we've been through, and our community is still standing, we carry with us the votes, the support, and the thoughts and prayers of our community and our constituents. But more importantly, we can never forget that. We can never forget who elected us, what we're doing, and I'm grateful to have partners like you with what we're doing here. And I'm almost last name. Let's talk Hillsborough Day. We have to put on a show. We've got this little city in South Florida called Miami, right? They have a whole thing down there. Hillsborough's got to show up. We've got to perform. I would love to see each of you there. As the outgoing delegation chair, Karen Gonzalez-Pitman will be the incoming chair, I think, because I think is what we're going to try to do, is what she wants to do. I know she's going to run. We'll see how the votes go. But ultimately, I want us as community leaders to come together and show what Hillsborough is all about. Let's talk about Ebor. Let's talk about downtown Tampa. Let's talk about the strawberry fields. Let's talk about all the things that make our community great, because it's our people, and it's our way of life. And I look forward to sharing this with you. Thank you. God bless you, and have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, y'all.
Thank you Senator Collins and Representative Owen, and I personally want to thank both of you, not only for your service, but for how hard you work for Hillsborough County for your constituents. And it's quite obvious, the fact that you're here today is a shining example of just how much you care about your constituents. And I also want to say that, you know, I've been on this board a long time, and we've served with and worked with a number of excellent representatives and senators through the years. But to my knowledge, this is the first time I've ever had two representatives come here and say what you guys did. And it's very, very much appreciated from the old timer here. I want to tell you that. Personally, thank both of you, and it's always great to see Commissioner Owen's sense of humor as well. And Commissioner, I know that you didn't get a, you know, you didn't get a proper goodbye, and I think the county administrator wants to present something to you right now.
So Commissioner Owen, you left abruptly, and so we didn't get to say goodbye to you. So we have for you a street sign that you can put in your office and remember Hillsborough County. All right, thank you.
Thank you all. That's really nice. And also, Chair, you get to now say you're the best baseball player on the board now.
Something that's better left unsaid.
There we go.
Hold on one second. Commissioner Miller wants to make some comments.
I just wanted to say thank you for coming. It's, one of the things I ran on was the relationships that we have and how important they are to our constituents, those relationships at the state and at the federal level. And so thank you. I hope that you'll continue to come back, give us updates on what's going on, so that the people know how hard you all are working for us, and we need to tell the story. So thank you all for being here. I appreciate it.
All right. Thanks again, guys.
Thank you everybody.
Merry Christmas. Okay. Bonnie?
Thank you. I think we could really handle Commissioner Myers' few items if we'd like to.
Sure.
Commissioner Myers, if we can go to item F3, and you have F3, 4, 5, and 6.
Yes.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. Agenda item F3 through F6 were my flag items approved in the FY24-25 budget. Today's approval is for the board to approve sponsorship with each organization. F3, the 72nd South Atlanta Regional Conference to be held April 16 through April 20 of 2025. The economic impact to our county is $7,713,000. Therefore, I move for approval.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Myers. Do you have a second? Second Commissioner Bowles. Commissioner Wustel?
As four of us just heard in our previous TPO meeting, we have mayors begging us for $50,000 sidewalks that were saying we don't have the funding, so we shouldn't be funding sorority and fraternity parties in place of that. Thank you very much.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Please accord your vote on F3.
Cohen? Motion carried, five to one. Commissioner Wustel voted no.
All right, F4?
F4, the 2025 Cottagey Woodson Scholarship Reception to be held on June 8. This sponsorship is to help youth further their education at a community college, our four-year college. Therefore, I move for approval.
Got a motion by Commissioner Myers. Do you have a second? Second Commissioner Bowles, please accord your vote on F4.
Cohen? Motion carried, five to one. Commissioner Wustel voted no.
F5?
Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated Organization Leadership Program will be held July 17 through July 20, 2025. The economic impact of this, to this county is $1 million. Therefore, I move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Myers for F5. Do you have a second? Second Commissioner Bowles. Commissioner Wustel?
Once again, we have mayors begging us for critical public safety improvements, so we should not be prioritizing sorority parties over those improvements. Thank you.
Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
So I just wanted to confirm, because this is what I was told, F3 through F6 are all flag items, your flag items, right?
Yes.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Please accord your vote.
Wustel? Cohen? Motion carried, five to one. Commissioner Wustel voted no.
And F6, Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, the 2025 International Conclave to be held July 14 through the 20 of 2025, will have an economic impact of $4 million to our county. Therefore, I move for approval.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Myers. Do you have a second? Second Commissioner Bowles. Commissioner Wustel?
Once again, this is a $150,000 fraternity party that should not be prioritized over critical safety improvements when we have mayors begging for $50,000 sidewalks that can't get painted. Thank you.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Please accord your vote, F6.
Cohen? Motion carried, five to one. Commissioner Wustel voted no.
Next item?
Commissioner Miller, are you good with F7 now? Okay, very good. I think we could do F7. This is regarding Commissioner Miller's item regarding work with the Crisis Center and making various contract modifications.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, sir. The Crisis Center is requesting staffing changes to maintain services per the approved BOCC agreement. Staffing will periodically review and adjust the program's success with any changes aligning with contract performance measures and BOCC approvals. The proposed changes include nurses at the South Shore Community Resource Center, number 23-0086. Request to update the nurse examiner job descriptions, including and required prior experience and same certification timeline. This change will aid in recruiting and retaining qualified nurses for the forensic exams following sexual assaults. Number two, operation Sexual Assault Services and Suicide Prevention, number 23-1138. Request to reduce suicide prevention care coordinators from three to two with a .5 FTE manager of care coordination. This change will not affect client numbers, but will improve service efficiency and support care coordination for clients with suicidal ideations. I motion to direct staff to work directly with the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay Inc., Crisis Center, to make contract modifications requested by the Crisis Center.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Miller.
Second.
Second Commissioner Myers. I don't see him in the queue. Please accord your vote on F7.
Cohen? Motion carried, six to zero.
Next item?
Okay, well, I was trying to get to 10:30, but if you all could waive your rules to hear item E1, which is a special appearance by Chuck Carden with Tampa Bay Water.
Got a motion to waive the rules?
Move for approval.
Motion Commissioner Myers, and Commissioner Miller. Please accord your vote to waive our rules.
Wustel? Cohen? Motion carried, six to zero.
Next item?
So the next item is item E1. This is to receive a special appearance by Chuck Carden with the General Manager of Tampa Bay Water. Now Commissioner Wustel and Commissioner Cohen sit on the Tampa Bay Water Board, but the rest of you do not get the same opportunity to hear regarding the projects. And so we will have this opportunity today. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, sir.
Yes, good morning. Thank you for having me. I know some of you, and I know some of you are new to the board, and I wanted to come over and give you an update on what we're doing at Tampa Bay Water and introduce myself. My name is Chuck Carden. I am the General Manager of your wholesale regional water supplier. Again, Commissioner Cohen sits as our chair, and Commissioner Wustel is also a board member. They do a wonderful job. It's a tough job representing the regional water as well as the Hillsborough County's interest. Our mission at Tampa Bay Water is very simple. It's to reliably provide safe, clean water to the Tampa Bay region now and for future generations. We were formed in 1998 to end what some of you recall is the decades-old water wars, and it reduced groundwater pumping that affected the surrounding environment. We are a special district of the state of Florida, and we provide water to more than 2.00 and we provide water to more than 2.6 million people throughout the six-member governments. The six members include the three counties of Hillsborough, Pasco, and Pinellas, and the cities of Newport Ritchie, St. Petersburg, and Tampa. And as far as I know, we are the only water utility in the United States that blends three different water sources, and that being groundwater, river water, and seawater. We have 163 employees, and we charge each of the members the same amount for the water. It's $2.62 per thousand, which is a little more than a quarter of a penny a gallon, if you break it down. Hillsborough County is our largest customer, and this year we're budgeted to give you 85.1 million gallons a day, which is about 40% of our total system demand. Since my last update to you last year, we've been working very hard. We are addressing new water quality parameters. We're meeting the region's short-term water needs, and we're also meeting the longer-term growth. This graph represents the total amount of water that we delivered in the water year 2023 versus the water year 2024, which just ended on September 30. And you can look at the numbers, and they're very close. And you could question, how did that happen with two different years, all the growth? We were in a major drought last year, and that we did the same last year as we did the year before. Well, Southwest Florida Water Management District put out a one-day-a-week water restriction, which was a tremendous help in keeping the demands down. And it allowed us to reduce the usage of our 15.5 billion gallon reservoir. We use the reservoir as our water savings account. And so as we get to the end of the water year, we try to put water in it when it's raining. And we use it during the dry season, which we're about to start. So with the drought last year, we had a very peculiar year. It was very dry, and then, as you know, in the last couple of months, we got more water than we knew what to do with. But as of July 14, I can remember the date, we were down to about 2.3 billion gallons in the 15 billion gallon reservoir, which you see a picture on the right. That's full. That's very recent. So trying to get it full by September 30, when we're at 2.3, I would have probably lost a bet if I had to put money on it that we would get there. But lo and behold, we did. We are at full capacity as we are into the dry season now. Our D-SAL plant is being started up. It was taken down last year for repairs, and it is being started up. And we plan to be running it between 15 and 20 million gallons a day, probably through June. But regardless of the source, all the water we supply to our members meets or surpasses all of the drinking water standards. And we are taking steps to ensure that we keep pace with the new standards that are coming out. Recently, there was new regulations established for what the PFOS, you've seen it in the news, or the forever chemicals, which are man-made chemicals, and they're found in about every product that we use every day. The new regulations are now in effect, and the compliance is required by the year 2029 by all the utilities. And the new standard is four parts per trillion. And we just recently completed our quarterly testing events. We started them last year. We've coordinated them with our members, including Hillsborough County staff. We wanted to find out if PFOS was present in our regional water supply and to what extent. And the data that we collected shows that there's two areas in our system where we are close or slightly above the new limit of four parts per trillion. Those are at our Brandon Wells in the Lithia area, and also at our surface water treatment plant, which feeds your central water treatment plant. We hired a consultant who's working with us on a report, and we plan to present recommendations to our board early next year. Beyond the water quality, we're also focusing on increasing the quantity that we have to meet with all the growing demands in the area. We are working to expand our surface water treatment plant by about 10 to 12 million gallons a day. The plant's located close to the fairgrounds in Brandon, in the middle of a lot of growth area. We are in the design phase on the plant, and we are expecting to start construction in July, to be complete by the year 2028. But the growing demand means we also need to secure new water supplies for the 2033 to the 2043 timeframe. Our projections show that we will need an additional 10 to 15 million gallons a day of new water by the year 2033, and a total of 25 million gallons a day by the year 2043. In November of '23, last year, now it's November, the board approves seven projects, shown here, to study further in the feasibility stage. The projects are ordered from north to south, and you can see they're spatially diverse, but they also have different supplies. There's some fresh groundwater supply, brackish water, groundwater, surface water, and additional seawater. We have started those studies, and the projects that are shown to be technically feasible, environmentally sound, and economical, will be brought back to the board for recommendations for these new sources into the future. Probably by the year 2027, '28, we'll be bringing back to the board. And those will be for the 2033 timeframe, so the new water supplies. We're still, we're looking at that, even though we're still working on the '28. We're starting the construction on that. In addition, we have been working on several projects to help the growing demands in your South Hillsborough County service area. One project, the Brandon Booster Station here, shown in the picture, has been completed. And this allowed us to bring up to about 7 million gallons a day of additional water to that area. In addition, we are working with the county to convert a test well in the Baum area to a production site that could yield 2.3 million gallons a day. This test well was part of a feasibility study for a larger well field in South Hillsborough County, which is part of those seven projects that I showed you. It's called the South Hillsborough Well Field. And that project concept is in conjunction, working with Hillsborough County, where on your coast, you have a project called Sharp, and I know you've heard the term, where the county's putting treated reclaimed water on the coast to prevent saltwater intrusion. But what that also allows is water to build up back pressure, to build up inland three or four miles, that the district could permit up to 6 to 9 million gallons a day, depending on how much water you put down on the coast. We could yield that inland. And so that is one of those projects that we are studying. At the same time, we're also designing a new South Hillsborough pipeline. The pipeline is 26 miles long, and it can provide, it'll provide water from our regional facility site, the surface water treatment plants that I mentioned earlier near the fairgrounds, down to your fast-growing South Hillsborough County region. The pipeline is broken into two segments. Segment A, which is the northern segment, comes down north to south and then goes over to the east. That's Segment A, and that's Tampa Bay Water will be building that. It's up to a 72-inch pipe. Hillsborough County's got Segment B, which drops off right there at Fishhawk Boulevard on the slide and heads down to the new water campus. And so that project is being worked on, design and property acquisition. And we also are hopeful to start construction next summer in time for completion by the year 2028. And all of these projects require very close coordination with your utility staff. We have been meeting bi-weekly with them for probably a year and a half, two years. So we, every two weeks, we get on a phone call and we talk about things that we're working on together. And some of the upcoming activities that will include amending the existing 2021 joint project agreement for the pipeline that I mentioned. So in '21, we have a joint project agreement with the county to do Segment B for you. And we're going to be amending that. We need to define the new point of connection, the location. We're also going to add some infrastructure on behalf of the county, the Lithia Plant. And also, I think there's some future infrastructure for expansion into the future. We're also going to be talking to the county's ELAP program about reaching an agreement that potentially could exchange our Cone Ranch water rights for some well sites, for maybe that well, that South Hillsborough well field that I talked about, that project. So we're working to accomplish that. And we're also talking to county staff to define and negotiate property needs that we might need at the Agmart Baum Water Camp, your water campus. In addition to all that, we need to have an agreement. If we buy credits from you for the reclaimed water, we need to have an agreement on that, on the cost of that. And so we'll be starting that up early in the year coming up. And that was just a brief overview. I know it's very busy for us, and I, as well as you, and I'm very happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Carden. Appreciate the presentation. Do you have any questions or comments? Commissioner Wustel?
Mr. Carden, perhaps you'd like to inform the board of our potential efforts of a new reservoir as we have major discussions about water challenges throughout Hillsborough County and how that may benefit. I know that we're in the early stages of it, but perhaps mention it to them so they know that what's coming.
Absolutely. Part of those feasibility studies that I talked about, there's three projects that are, that deal with surface water. And so one of them is at the existing reservoir site, which would include a new surface water treatment plant, but an additional reservoir. There's another site we're looking at down near the Manatee-Hillsborough border. And then there's another site in Pinellas County, Lake Tarpon, to do the same thing. Each would have a surface water component with a reservoir. And one of the, that was, you know, the good news, that was started ahead of what we just experienced with the hurricanes. But during the hurricanes, we had so much water, we filled up our reservoir. And it was very clear that if we had another three or four of these reservoirs, that would be very good. And so that kind of moved things up a little bit. These projects were underway. But with that clarity, that's a pretty good idea. So we're looking very hard to see if we're getting additional storage, not only the 15.5 billion, but more.
Okay, thank you, sir. I don't see anyone else in the queue. Again, appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much for having me.
No, I think we're good. Hey, Bonnie?
I think we have a few minutes. We can hear item G1, which is a receiver report regarding the code enforcement regarding potential updates to the Hillsborough County towing ordinance. And we have Joe Gross and Whitney Green to present this item.
Good morning, Joe.
Good morning. Season's greetings. This follows up a September meeting request for a report on some possible revisions to the county's trespass towing ordinance. Much of the need is based on changes in state law. It also offers an opportunity to look at some consumer protections and also industry best practices. In 2021, the legislature adopted statute 163-211, which preempts local licensing of occupations not authorized by general law. So we have until July of next year to discontinue the separate licensing of individual tow truck drivers, which we do under our public vehicle driver's licenses. You also recall last year, we changed the maximum rates, and we also allowed for the use of credit cards. Since that, in the last legislative session, state statutes were also amended to require towing operators accept different means of payment. But there's a little bit of a difference between our ordinance and the state statute that we'd like to resolve as well. By opening the ordinance, we can also consider some provisions to address roam towing. This is when tow companies go out and patrol without being specifically requested to go out by a property owner or an agent. Towing from public roads or right-ofways and subdivisions, which has occurred. Establishing a minimum waiting period, 15 or 30 minutes before the tow can actually happen, requires some date and timestamp photos, so when our investigators go out to investigate, that they have some good evidence to look at. Better verify compliance with insurance requirements. Conduct an initial tow yard inspection with law enforcement, and also some other best practices for vehicle signage and mechanic certifications. The report includes a history of how we got here today and some options for ordinance revisions. Both we and the county attorney's office is available if you have any questions.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate the comments. Do you have any questions or comments from board members? I just want to say thank you. You do an outstanding job, you and your entire team, and it's very much appreciated.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Happy New Year.
Can we motion to accept the report?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Wustel. Please accord your vote.
Cohen? Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you. We can now go to our 10:45 time certain. This is item E2. This is a special appearance by Rob Higgins, the Executive Director of the Tampa Bay Sports Commission.
Good morning, Rob.
Well, he's getting us teed up. Just as always, wanted to start with a hearty thank you. We appreciate all your continued support and partnership since the last time we had a chance to visit, about six months ago. Been on a great roll, not only with hosting events, but as well as some incredible announcements. I'm going to walk you through some of those, as well as our year-end numbers, which wrapped up on September 30, and then certainly we'll open it up to any questions. First, I'm going to start with an event that always brings a smile to a lot of people's faces is Red Bull Flutog. When we say we will go after and recruit events of all shapes and sizes, I think Red Bull Flutog proves that. We brought 40 teams here in conjunction with our friends at Red Bull, and over 100,000 people attended a really special day on November 9. That was our third time hosting. Traditionally, Red Bull has only gone to communities once, maybe twice. And the fact that we were able to have it a third time speaks to the job that our community does when it comes to these, these big events. Up next, I want to talk a little bit, I'll do it in reverse order, but want to talk about some of the major events that are on the horizon, as well as some of the announcements that have taken place. NCAA Women's Final Four is coming back for a record fourth time on April 4th and 6th at Amalie Arena. If you follow women's basketball at all, the trajectory of the sport and the growth over the last few years has been incredible, as evidenced by the viewership being at an all-time high, as well as the event selling out the quickest that it has in its championship history, which is phenomenal. In addition to the games themselves, a wide variety of different fan events. And then we'll also bring coaches here from around the country for the Women's Basketball Coaches Association Convention, which takes place in tandem with the championship. So fun-filled week of events. If you log on to wfftampa Bay dot com, you can learn more. But again, we appreciate everybody's support on that event and could not be more excited. Just last month, we had a string of three announcements in three days. Started off with the Savannah Bananas. You may be familiar. They played the last two years when we recruited them to Steinbrenner Field. Each of those nights, in the first year, we had them for two nights. We then were able to increase them to three nights. Last year, over 50,000 people attended. They then wanted to explore bigger venues, so we helped them with an introduction to the Rays, so they could take a year off from Hillsborough, but then naturally come back, hopefully sooner rather than later. Got them settled in at Tropicana Field. And then through the impacts of the hurricane, that was no longer playable. And we worked in tandem with Jesse Cole, their owner and their franchise, to keep them here and become their first-ever NFL stadium that they've played. Yesterday, they announced that the event has sold out. So 65,000 people on March 15 will take in Banana Ball, and our relationship with them just continues to grow and expand. So that was the first of three announcements. The second one is that the greatest player of all time, Lionel Messi, in the sport of soccer, and his Inter Miami team are coming on February 14 to Raymond James Stadium to take on Orlando City. That's an announcement that we've, an event that we've worked on for several months, really since he signed at Inter Miami. And it's already done great from an overall sales standpoint. And it's going to be a really special night in our community. And what better way to celebrate Valentine's Day than a soccer match at Raymond James Stadium? And then the third of three announcements, the iconic Florida-Georgia rivalry. That has been a spectacle in Jacksonville for several years. Their stadium is going under construction, which is going to allow them to go to Atlanta in 2026, and then here in 2027. There was a lot of competition for that. There was a lot of competition for that event, but we're really fortunate to have, have brought it home. So three really special announcements in three straight days, totally different sports, really speaks to the diverse profile of the events that we can attract here and other communities. No offense to any of them, would, I certainly would jump over themselves to be able to have one of those announcements in a year, and the fact that we had three in three days, I think speaks to this great partnership we have with Hillsborough County. From a room night perspective, we generated in both quarter three and quarter four, close to 81,000 hotel visitor room nights. That brings our overall total to the year to 232,000 hotel visitor room nights. And I always like to point out just how well the sportsplex is doing. From a perspective, I think the last time I visited with you, we talked about the pre-construction feasibility report and that third party saying that the facility of that nature should generate about 151,000 hotel visitor room nights, and it ended up doing 217,000. Well, year six has already been off to a great role. Just a reminder on this one, it's from a calendar year perspective, it's already done 67,000 hotel visitor room nights. And that doesn't count a lot of the great events we've had in recent weekends with several hundred soccer teams and other sports as well. So a great role from a youth and amateur standpoint. We couldn't do what we do without each of you and, and all of your support and partnership. We appreciate the supplemental funding that you've provided us as part of today's consent agenda as well. That will go back to the use of these, these great events that we've added on in pretty short notice. And then just one last statistic that I'll, I'll wrap with. You guys generously, graciously provided us an investment this past year of a little over $1.5 million in hotel bed tax. Based off those 232,000 room nights, we were able to generate $2.3 million in hotel bed tax. So we not only returned the money back to, from a tourist tax standpoint, we, we gave a return on investment of over 50% as well, which in today's economy, in today's world of investing, is pretty strong to do in a, in one year's time. But that's, that's our motto, and that's the way we try to do is, and try to make you proud in terms of what we, we generate and the ROI that we provide back to the community here. So with that, love to open it up to, to any questions that you may have.
Well, Rob, I just want to say phenomenal job, as always. You started out this, your presentation with the first slide, it said game day every day, and a lot of folks had some motto, but for, I know for your organization, it's reality, evidenced by all the events that you've not only announced, but I know that you're, that you're working on. So just keep up the great work. And personally, as the commissioner who championed the sportsplex, I want to thank you for highlighting how successful that, that, you know, that field and complex is. So keep up the great work. I don't see anyone else in the queue, and just hang in there, buddy.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Bonnie, next item?
The next item is item G3. This is a report regarding advanced payments to nonprofits that Commissioner Cameron Cepeda had requested, and Tom Fessler will present this item.
Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Fessler. Commissioners, on October 23rd, Commissioner Cameron Cepeda asked staff to review whether the county could provide advanced funding to smaller nonprofit organizations that find it difficult to operate on a reimbursement basis. We have worked with the Clerk of the Circuit Court and the County Attorney's Office to produce the report that you have in front of you today. One thing I wanted to point out was that the Clerk of the Circuit Court is the organization that basically acts as the accountant for the Board of County Commissioners. They are the ones that make all the payments to vendors, and they also are making, make sure that we are in compliance with Florida law. When we looked at Florida law, what we found is that there is generally a presumption that advanced payments of invoices for delivery of goods and services is not permissible. However, we did find through Florida statute and through a Department of Financial Services reference guide, that there are three exceptions to that. Two of the exceptions would not apply to the nonprofits. However, we did find that there is a third exception that does allow for advanced payments to nonprofits. However, what that exception does allow, it allows for up to, an advance of up to three months' worth of services or cash flow that's anticipated, that's a need for, for a nonprofit. After the three months, however, we would need to go back to a reimbursement basis. So, but when you get to month four, then the services would need to be provided in advance of any payments to going out to the nonprofit. We also found, what we also have identified is that if we do intend to do any advanced payments to nonprofits, we would need to include that in any agreement that we would have that comes to the board for approval. So we want to make sure that that's clear. The laws are basically silent as it relates to potentially some capital items that we might fund for nonprofits. So we would just need to look at, on a case-by-case basis, with the Clerk of the Circuit Court, opportunities or, or methods that we might be able to make advanced payments for, for capital-type purchases. Generally, when we have nonprofit agreements, we structure them such that services have to be delivered first, and we also try to structure them such that we fund outcomes, and we don't necessarily provide reimbursement based on itemized expenses. We also have two different types of methodologies of reimbursing nonprofits. For some of our nonprofits, we, we do provide, we have agreements and contracts that are set up based on a 1/12 reimbursement every month. Those do still require reports every month from the nonprofit on the services delivered. And in other cases, the payments are based on the actual level of services that are provided every month. One other situation, I guess, and you, you approved some, some items today. There is one, there is one particular circumstance where we do provide advanced, another provided advanced payments to nonprofits is where, through our sponsorship policy. So if there is a given one-time event that's going to be provided by or put on by a nonprofit, that, we do make advanced payments in, in relation to those. And we do believe that that would meet the exception that's included in Florida law, based on the fact that we can, you know, make those payments for up to three months of, of use, and so we would make those payments within the three-month period prior to the event being put on. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
All right. Thanks, Tom. Appreciate the presentation. Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
Yes. I'd like to say thank you so much for that report, Mr. Fessler. And also, one of the reasons why that I wanted to bring this up and, was because, like you mentioned, all the money that's put out sometimes on these one-time events versus, you know, our people in our community, we have organizations that are helping people with drug addictions, and as we know, we have a crisis here right now. So this would be able to help with those, you know, help with people that have addictions or, you know, whatever it may be, or organizations that are helping veterans. So I just really felt that, you know, it's important that we help those organizations that are helping so many people in our community, and because we see so many things come by here that are, help, you know, give the money out to these one-time events, you know, festivals or whatever it might be, you know? And so we really need to help these smaller organizations that are doing so many awesome things in our community. So thank you very much.
All right. Commissioner Wostel?
Tom, we bought an organization, a 3D concrete printer, and they went through years of delays to eventually get it working. Did they buy it and then we reimburse them, or did we buy it for them?
Commissioner, I'm not exactly sure standing here. I can get back to you on that.
Yeah, sure.
I know that they have, they have, I believe, purchased it and, and provided, last I heard, they had purchased it, they had done some training, and they were in the process of getting it up and running. I'd have to go back and look at actually how that was reimbursed. I don't recall.
Yeah, I would like to see the movement of funds for that. Thank you.
All right. Can we have a motion to accept the report?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, and Commissioner Cameron Cepeda. Please accord your vote, G3.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, Tom. Bonnie, next item?
Perfect. Thank you for asking that question, because it's now 11 o'clock. Item G2, this is to receive a report regarding improving the development services permitting process, and this will be followed by item G4 relating to streamlining the RFP process. We'll have Adam Gormley take us through item G2.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services Department, here today to present to you a report on improving the development services permitting process. This was a report that Commissioner Hagan had brought to the board, or a request Commissioner Hagan brought to the board, with a goal of improving the permitting process, service delivery quality, and simplifying the plan review process. I'll just take that description and say what we're really looking for here is efficiencies in our process. We are, we have some good recommendations here that we both looked at and identified internally in meeting with some stakeholders, and the theme in all these is, again, efficiencies. It's how do we do what we do with less steps, quicker, while not compromising any of our review standards or any of the protections that we're looking for, for the community, while serving our industry clients in an efficient way. So the, we started this by identifying four process improvements that we, we're going to speak to our stakeholder group on. We formed a stakeholder group that was representatives of both commercial and residential building, engineering, and entitlement areas. We met with the group with our four recommendations, and the result of that is we expanded our list from four to 11. I'll run through these four identified ones very briefly. The first one was looking at our sufficiency review process for zoning applications. What we have instituted is a meeting at the early site, or the outset of a rezoning application to look at are all the pieces there for us to be able to conduct a review. Our practice had been that we would hold that meeting and send written comments subsequently. We have now reversed that order, where we are providing the comments in advance of the meeting and still holding an opportunity for an applicant to attend, but not mandating attendance if those written comments are sufficient. And those written comments would reflect what we would have verbalized in the meeting, but if applicant would still like to meet and discuss, ask questions, we still offer that opportunity, but will not mandate that that meeting take place. We believe this will save some time for those applicants who are ready to move on with their application and don't need that extra step of meeting with, with county staff. Similarly, we have a currently pre-submitting meetings for site development applications. These are, for the most part, optional meetings. They are, they are used by applicants, and it's an opportunity for an applicant to show their plans prior to submittal, ask questions of county review, get feedback on what issues we're, we will be looking at, and ask questions about the review process. Right now, it is mandatory, if a project is going to go to a straight-to-construction rather than doing a preliminary site development plan, we mandate that they attend a pre-submitting meeting, whether they need it or not. What we're proposing is to make that meeting non-mandatory. We will still offer the opportunity to do that. What we're finding in these meetings is some, some applicants are sophisticated enough that they know what they're doing, they have their plans. In fact, they come to, many times, to the pre-submitting meetings with the exact plans that they're ready to submit, but they're coming to those meetings to check a box. We think by eliminating that requirement for those who are comfortable submitting their, their plans, we'll save several weeks of time for those applicants, also freeing up meeting time for other applicants who do need those meetings. Those meetings are scheduled a fair bit out in advance right now. Third approval, third process improvement was internal. We have at the end of our process, a review process. Once a project is all, has received all approvals or approval with conditions, we generate a checklist sent to applicants that identify additional submittals, payment of fees, and what needs to be submitted in terms of a plan that'll be used for construction. We currently have a practice, we had a practice of running a report once a week for projects that were approved the prior week. Our system currently doesn't automatically notify us, so we do, we do a check for those. We have changed that to where we're doing, running a check every day. So we see every day what projects were approved the previous day, and that will indicate to our staff, project managers, that a checklist needs to be sent out. This is a pretty significant portion, phase of the development process, because when a project gets to this phase, they're ready to go. They're ready to start turning dirt. They've got funding lined up, they've got expectations, they've got, they've got resources identified. So the sooner we can get them for an approved plan to be able to, to be able to start work, we think is, is a significant improvement. The last one that we identified with the group has, was kind of a springboard off a change in state law this year. Senate Bill 812 created a requirement for us to implement a expedited residential building permit process. Our current building permit process, I'm sorry, current subdivision process has three steps. Has a preliminary plat, which gives the general layout of a subdivision, has a construction, subdivision construction plan that shows the engineering of the, of the project, and then a final plat, which is what gets recorded in public records and becomes the new legal description for, for the project. Currently, our, our regulations require that a final plat be recorded before we'll issue building permits for residential homes. We have, allow a small number of mobile, model homes to be issued in advance. What this bill has required is that we allow up to 50% of building permits to be issued once the preliminary plat and construction plans have been approved. We are recommending that we move that number to 100%. We believe that we are, we, that will simplify the, the process, it'll eliminate tracking, and under this proposal, the end product of this will still end where it is today, which is before those units can be occupied, COs issued, all of the infrastructure that's supporting that subdivision will be in place. So while it changes the timing of when those permits are, are issued, it does not change what we're looking for that, to be in place to support the homes. This, these four proposals led to some other discussion with, with our stakeholders. I'll, I'll just hit some of these briefly and hit the highlights. The residential building permit process gave us an opportunity to look at our plating process. So as I mentioned, we have three steps, preliminary, construction, and final. We're recommending that we offer the opportunity for applicants to do a combined preliminary plat and construction plan review. Again, this will not compromise any of the substance of what we look at, it will not change any of the standards that we apply, any, any requirements of the zoning or community plan, or the land development code, our technical manuals will all still be enforced under this proposal. It just does it in less steps. We think that for a, a average application that's moving at a, at a reasonable pace, this could save a couple of months in that plating process, while again, not compromising any of the protections that we have in place for our community. The, some other changes that we are, had, had suggested to us, deal with timing of fee determinations, and that's something that we're going to be looking at in our fee structure, whether we can charge an upfront fee, and then charge the, the rest at the conclusion of the project, thereby eliminating delays upfront. We would have a, what I would call, office hours for our reviewers. We currently have, for active projects, development review committee meetings, which is really a gathering of staff reviewers and allows the applicant to come and ask questions, get clarification on comments, and sometimes try to resolve those at the meeting. We've had a request that staff be also available during the week on a one-on-one basis, so we will be implementing, again, like I call, office hours, like college professors used to have, where we have designated times for either reviewers or representatives from a review, a review group to ask and answer questions about pending applications. Last one I'll highlight is the, the current practice that we have, the board members, you see this with planned development zonings that come to you, is when we have a zoning comes, that comes to us, we look at the roads that are going to be used to take access to that, to that project. And we look for roads that are, whether they meet county standards or whether they don't. And as county standards are set off, set forth in the county's transportation technical manual, and that manual is a dynamic manual. manual, and that manual is a dynamic manual. It has updated over the years. Standards change, standards evolve. We have plenty of roads in the county that are built to prior standards. We look to have them improved to be, to be current county standards within the bounds of what's reasonable and achievable. So, we do have road cross-sections that won't fit in what right-of-way we have, so we entertain what we call design exceptions. It's a process that's identified in the transportation technical manual to provide a alternate construction standard for those roads. Our practice now, our practice in, in the past had been that we would identify roads and require that they be improved to county standards unless a design exception was, was approved. A few years back, that process was desired to be changed where the design exception work was done in advance of the zoning recommendations. And you'll see that now where if this application's approved, the county engineer will approve the design exception for X, Y, and Z. What we have experienced with that and received feedback from our, our development clients is that at the zoning stage, the design exception work requires a fair bit of detail and survey work and identifying pavement widths and shoulders that really is not typically available at the zoning stage. Typically, that is work that, that projects have prepared once they're ready to do permitting. And as a consequence, that design exception requirement being done at the zoning stage is causing a fair number of applicants to be delayed. Either they're not sufficient when they come in with their application, which causes them to be continued, or they, they don't have time to meet their hearing date while working out design exception requests. So, what we're proposing to do and I'm recommending is that we revert to the prior practice where we identify those roads that need to be improved, recognize that there could be a design exception, but allow that work to be done at the permitting stage. Again, as with all these recommendations, this will not change the standards that we apply for those. It will not change the, the work we do to look out for the, the benefit and of the community. But it does change, it, it puts that work in a time where a typical applicant will have the information available to do that. The, the, some of these recommendations is we think that we will reduce project timelines, some cases by weeks or months. And there are some smaller time improvements that will come at critical points in the project, such as at the very end when a project is ready to get, to get underway and provides increased flexibility and frankly, more capacity for staff to, to be able to do the work that we need to do. We do, do note that some of these changes do require a land development code amendment. And so, request if the board's inclined to accept this report to also authorize us to schedule land development code amendments for the January 7th and February 11th land use meetings. Those, those two meetings already have a land development code public hearing scheduled for time extensions for zoning applications due to local disaster declarations. And finally, we do intend to engage the stakeholder group in six months to see how their feedback on these proposals. But I do want to mention, this is not something that we're considering a one-and-done effort. We're, we, we thank the board for bringing this opportunity to us because it has been really, it's been a really good experience to kind of look at what we're doing and can we do it differently while still achieving our same goals but doing it with less steps and less, less requirements on, on applicants. So, we, we continue that work. We do have monthly meetings with our industry to receive feedback. So, while we do want to get some feedback on this group, this is a continuing process for us, and we continue, we intend to continue to look for efficiencies in our process while continuing to provide protection to the community. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Adam, for that presentation. Commissioner Wostol?
Thank you, Adam. You know, you've heard, you've heard me complain about this since the day I got here, long before this item was ever even brought. But for me, it's because it impacts so many small contractors. The big ones have all the money in the world for all the land use attorneys and to work through whatever arduous process there. And, you know, every, every delay by government, every requirement by government is an invisible tax that just makes everything else more expensive for the general public. That's my goal, is that it affects so many of the really small contractors, and that's the only ones that I've received complaints from about the processes. It's none of the big ones. It's the small ones that are just maybe a small business, mom and pop, maybe a sole proprietorship type of business. And it's, it's impossible for them to reasonably do business when they need to potentially pay $30,000, $40,000 just to do some, some one small job with tons of delays. They, they usually will not have the capital to outlay and be able to delay that many months in a process. That's, that's why I think that this is a good process, is that it, it doesn't, it doesn't impact the big, the big developers. It impacts, in the same way that it impacts the small, regular contractors. So, that's why I support the item.
All right. Thank you. And I echo Commissioner Wostol's comments and say that I, I brought this forward because for, for years, I had heard complaints from contractors complaining about just how the process was inefficient, time-consuming, and costly. And so costly, in fact, that so many firms, you know, would not or could not bid on our projects, which ultimately limits the competition. And if you look at many of our projects, we use the same firms, some of, some of which staff will tell you we've had significant issues and challenges with. But if you've only got one or two firms that are bidding on projects, you don't have anyone else to do business with, but ultimately just drives up the cost. Now, when, so this is why I brought it forward. And then when staff dug into it, they recognized that there's really two areas. One was permitting, which is what Adam's presentation just gave, and the other is the RFP, RFQ process. And so, staff bifurcated the recommendations. This is the first one here, and then the second one will be the RFQs. I just want to thank, Adam, I want to thank you, and I want to thank staff for, for taking the bull by the horns, getting with, you know, stakeholders and meeting with the industry and, and making the reservations that, like you, with what you led with efficiencies while not compromising our standards. So, I want to thank you for that. And if we can have a motion to accept the report and then to authorize the scheduling of the LDC public hearings.
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Wostol. Second Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote.
Aye.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, board members.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next item is item G4, which is the companion regarding the simplifying and streamlining the RFP and RFQ process. And I'll remind Mr. Stromer that he is between the board's holiday break, the last item before the holiday break.
Good job, Bonnie.
Good morning. Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. Also, this was item from Commissioner Hagan. We were asked to take a look at the RFP and RFQ process. We did have the RF, the RPS process, which is also Request Professional Services, that's engineering and architectural, because it's in the same family. As it stands now, we actually, within the last six months, actually have a great set of data finally to show us exactly where these things are occurring, how long it's taking. So, the RFP process has taken about four and a half months to get through the procurement process. The RFQ process and RPS process are taking about five months. Typically, those should not be any more than three months. And ideally, if we can get them down below, below that, that's even better. So, that's going to kind of drive a lot of this. And on the simplifying and streamlining, really, a lot of it was just making the process easier to understand and then just removing those steps that didn't add value. So, we identified initial five steps. We started this process actually probably in 2019, and we had focus groups back then. We did have four focus groups beginning earlier this year, starting in February, with professional engineers, architects, construction firms, got some great feedback. A lot of it, we had a sense of it, but we ended up identifying about 43 different issues. Of those issues, there were some duplicates in there, but there's some nuance that are worth tracking, which is what we'll do. I'll just quickly go through some of the common delays. We knew these existed, and we've been trying to, you know, wrestle with these. It's scheduling committee meetings, the way we do scoring, trying to speed that up. Negotiations, this happens typically on the client departments, just trying to get those negotiations done so those projects can start faster. So, we'll be working with the, the client departments, figuring out what can we do upfront to kind of speed those up, if it's standardized contracts, whatever we can do. So, we're also going to really watch those processes so we can see what's going on. Solicitation document review, it takes up to about a month to go through it. That's risk management, that's legal, economic development. We look at the specifications, see if we can speed that up, too. We do have a tool that we're getting ready to roll out here in the next few months, which is kind of a decision tree that will automate some of that process, which should help. And then, of course, protest. Protests are a necessary evil, but it can take time. For my part, I usually research. I respond to them personally. I need to delegate that a little bit, speed that up, and so we'll be doing that as well. Some of the planned process improvements, I won't go through all of them, I'll go through the big ones. A lot of our contract documents and the solicitations are kind of legacy. They go back to 1980, 1990. So, we do have to kind of, we have to update them. If we've updated them through the years since I've been here, and even since 1990, I'm sure they were updated. But it's time to bring them up to, to 2024 and really streamline those. It's not uncommon in government that when something goes wrong, we kind of slap another condition in the, in the package because that's going to kind of solve it. I can remember that, you know, Y2K stated my documents at Pasco probably for five years after Y2K. So, we do have to go back and revisit those documents and pull things out and constantly take a look at them. One of the complaints we had was about method, project method delivery. Typically, on our complex projects, we use design bid build, which is the hard bid. We get a fixed price or design build, where we kind of hire one firm that does design and the construction. The problem with those two is there's not a lot of opportunity through that process to adjust for inflation, any changes in conditions. So, we have started, we've made a hard move to CM at risk earlier this year. It's really more of a product of the market with price volatility. And the way CM at risk works is we hire a professional design firm, we hire a constructor or a contractor. They both independently work for us. And as a project comes online, it's a design, the contractor works with the design professional for constructability, make sure the walls line up where they should. It, it solves a lot of the problems that typically you would see at the end of the project when they're actually building it. So, there's a much greater opportunity for collaboration and partnership upfront through that process, and it kind of speeds up that process as well. So, it's a very, it's a very positive development. So, we are making that change, and we've already made that change. I will tell you, just as a product of the market, a lot of firms will not even participate if we do hard bid, right? So, it's kind of, since after COVID, it was just too volatile. And remember that whenever we have risk, there's a cost to that. And if those documents are not clear, or if there's a lot of risk, it's going to be reflected in the pricing. This way, it removes that risk, and we work on it together, and it's, it's very timely as it goes through it, and it's very responsible. I'll let you read through the rest of those that's there. I'm happy to visit with any of you about any of the details. These are all really good things. The last item on that list is really going back through the board policies, administrative directives. Again, a lot of these have been around for a while, and I'm a little embarrassed to say that I haven't gone back and looked at them before. And I mean, I, I should have. There's no excuse for that. But there's some things like the bid review committee. That takes about two, three weeks, and that's just if something comes in 10% over, we have to convene this committee, we talk about it, they say, yes, it's great. But this organization has changed a lot. In the agenda process, there's already so many reviews, that's an unnecessary step. So, that'd be a good example. So, the idea is to move this stuff along, improve this, reduce these cycle times by probably months. We need to increase the population of vendors, like Commissioner Hagan said. We have a very confined population. We need to actually do outreach. We have teams actually going throughout the estate to these construction conferences, actually recruiting firms, and we've been very successful. But the only way that works is if we have the right project method, the project delivery methods that they actually want to participate in. So, we have to be conscious of that as well. Okay. So, here's what we're going to do next. So, you remember, we've, we've talked about procurement policy in the past. We are, we, it's all updated, it's completed. My intent is to bring that in July to fix that. That's just the controls piece of it. We actually have in January will be rolled out project dashboards, which you'll be able to see every single project, the time it's taking and where the wait times are. So, you'll be able to see that, and those will be made available to you, the public, department heads, everybody. Everybody knows, and so collaboratively, we can all work on it together to find out where we can kind of drive some of this, this improvement. We're going to finish the improvements we talked about here, get those wrapped up by the end of February. We're going to meet back with the stakeholders in the month of March, make sure we've hit everything. And this isn't an end-all, be-all. This is going to be a living list of things that we just fixed. The items that I've highlighted are the ones that are probably going to give us the most impact, and then we can, after that, follow up and do the others. Lastly, we are going to rewrite all of the solicitation documents and the procedures manual by the end of April. And what I intend to do, what I'd like to do, is probably every June, we probably should come back and give you a state of procurement, let you know, how did we do, what are we doing? And in the month of May, actually meet with all the stakeholders annually to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. Did we do what we said we were going to do? So, with that, if you have any questions for me?
Scott, I have a question. I just want to thank you for your work on this. I appreciate your explanation of the importance of changing the project delivery method by going to construction manager at risk. You eliminate many of the cost uncertainties, will essentially provide more incentive for additional vendors to, to go after work, which will ultimately, again, drive down the, the price to us. So, I appreciate your explanation on that. And I don't see anyone else in the queue, so if we just have a motion to accept the report.
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers. Second Commissioner Wostol, please accord your vote, G4.
Aye.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Bonnie?
Thank you. The last item are future discussion items.
Okay. Anyone have any future discussion items? Commissioner Wostol?
Thank you. I'm sad that he wasn't able to stay, but he didn't know that I was bringing this up. But as many of you know, for 18 months, we heard Commissioner Owen at nauseam bring up the huge demand and need for Lithia Pinecrest. And being in lockstep with him through every moment, receiving even pushback through our desires on the TPO together for this very road by the grace of the voters of Hillsborough County approving the CIT, I would request that staff bring back a list of appropriate actions to my office to begin the implementation of Lithia Pinecrest once and for all in East Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Bonnie, you good with that? All right. I don't see anyone else in the queue, so hope everyone has a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and we'll see you next year.